There are other ways to bring that to our attention. We want to give everyone here, this is number one. This is number one. We also ask you not to clap or make any comments either while an individual is speaking or after speaking finishes as this slows down the process. If you want to speak tonight, we ask that you go out of court and that you give us your name and address for our records. And these cards, I believe, you may have extras, anyone else before we start. You have this kind of card. Okay. As stated earlier, you should not expect us to reply to your remarks, although we may ask you a question as of order, we will not take any action tonight in response to issues you raised during this session. At this time, I'd like to call up Melanie Green. She is here to discuss the Centers for Advanced Study. She lives at 210 Garden Arbor Drive in Lexington, 2072. And she is representing herself as a taxpayer. So Ms. Green, there she is.
My name is Melanie Green. I am a resident of Lexington County. I have been certified at two theater and also an A. I'm taking the chance to be speaking with you on this evening and as a senator of the South Carolina. First, I want to commend you for the work that you are doing in Lexington School District One as you are preparing the generation of leaders for us. I was thrilled to try to hear about the advanced, sorry, about the Centers for Advanced Studies that have been developed and are in the process of being developed, which gives you the skills needed to compete, contribute, and succeed locally and globally. I think the goal for specific learning is definitely commendable and something that we can always proud of. Such goals, we'll agree, apply to every child in our community. Clearly, the flyers and the website information state that, especially specifically the World Language Centers for Global Education, we're going to be struggling to open to all sophomores and juniors and seniors in Lexington School District One. The request before you is that since all Lexington School District One children affect us locally and globally, that the school board would consider this request, that if you thought few slots be opened up for home school students, just to participate in those centers and to participate in those exciting opportunities that have been placed before children in School District One. After research in the state code of laws and in contact from the legal department of the State Department of Education, there's evidence that each individual school district in the state of South Carolina holds the power to make those decisions which are filed in here before you today. I have talked to many different people trying to get information. Every person I've talked to says, "I don't know." We don't know. I've talked to several different people who are in charge and they're convinced that I don't know. So I think I can tell that they've already listened to you. And since these programs are new and developing, the request is that this is, that policies for the Centers for Advanced Studying include getting a full student opportunity to participate. My idea that the Centers for Advanced Studies are great programs that are meant to influence the entire community and that includes families that are currently in their student. And I believe that this would be a benefit for the entire community and all of our communities. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Green. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay. At this time, we'll turn it to Agenda Item 9.0, which is Reports and Action Items from Executive Session. Board, do I hear a motion to approve 22 Certified Recommendations for the 2012-2013 School Year?
Madam Chairman, I submit...
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Board, are there any questions or discussion regarding these 22 Certified Recommendations? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries and addition unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve two administrative recommendations for the 2012-2013 School Year?
Madam Chair, I believe that the board accept the superintendent's request to accept two administrative recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bachmann. We now have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we now have a second. And are there any questions or discussions, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and addition unanimous. Do I hear a motion regarding employee A?
I would like the board accept the superintendent's request to withdraw program recommendations and employee A be terminated from the board based on reasons for that.
Okay, we now have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions or discussion at this time?
Chair, I would like to excuse myself.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. Okay, at this time, we now have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? The motion carries and addition unanimous with one refusal. We'll note that, Cheryl. Okay, at this time, we turn to 10.0, which is Continuing Business. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Tally for our school updates. And Dr. Tally, head to the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to bring the board news to Janet Fiedler from Midway Elementary School, who will share with you the big things that the Midway Mustangs actually own at their school. She would say.
Madam Chair, I'm going to put it in the board members. It's a real honor to be here today. We are proudly going to share with you the events of the Catholic in Midway. We have video that took great collaboration to present. I want to share and introduce with you our team here supporting us. We have Assistant Principals Michelle Melissa Haperson, Mike Quanich. We also have our media specialists, Susan Cathy, Artis, Michelle Hui, and our interventionists, our leading our business of that cause. And you know, it takes a lot to pull things off in a school and lots of great minds coming together to make decisions at the middle. So Mike, if you would be able to give me the video of course.
The 2011-2012 School Year finds Midway Elementary at the beginning of an exciting new phase in its history. A new administrative team and a dynamic faculty and staff have committed themselves to leading as one as they meet the needs of each and every Midway Mustang. While Midway has won numerous awards and honors over the years, including multiple red carpet awards, the prestigious National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, and most recently, an 11th consecutive Palmetto Gold Award, the Midway community is excited to continue its journey into 21st century learning by aligning the school's mission and vision with that of Lexington One. The following illustrates a number of ways MES leads, MES learns, and MES lives. First, Midway is blessed with an incredible staff of teacher leaders. They are committed to practicing the four Cs of collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking as they strive to model lifelong learning for not only their students, but one another. Midway teachers are not the only leaders in the school. Students step up every day and play an important role in the success of the school. From safety patrol and recycling teams to flag helpers and the morning news team, student leaders are hard at work throughout the school day, helping to make Midway Elementary a great place to lead and learn and live. Midway Elementary students and staff are also leaders in the community. From the annual Veterans Day Assembly and Parade to hosting a Red Cross Blood Drive, Midway is taking a leadership role in its community. Midway Elementary is also a great place to learn, and students and teachers make use of the latest technology in teaching strategies to ensure every child is challenged to reach his or her full academic potential. The recent addition of a class set of iPads has brought a wave of excitement for learning into the classrooms at Midway. Teachers have enjoyed checking out these tools and engaging their learners on a whole new level. Technology at Midway is not limited to the iPad, however. Here, third grade French immersion students are using their language skills to explain to some French-speaking visitors what they have learned by using the iPod Touch. Here's a third grader communicating with someone in a foreign country using Skype. Learning at Midway is not limited to the use of technology. Here, students are using movement to communicate what they have learned in their class. Another way MES learns is by continuing to adapt to the ever-changing needs of students. A dedicated team of individuals has undertaken the challenge of transforming the media center into a learning commons designed to host a variety of student-centered learning throughout the school day. Not only is Midway Elementary committed to leading and learning, we are dedicated to promoting healthy living as well. Recently, health screenings for employees were held. Mustangs in Motion raised money for playground improvements, but more importantly, got students and their family members together on the walking track for a great time. The Jump Rope for Heart event raised not only money, but heart rates, and was a big success. A number of Midway students and staff members participated in the recent Governor's Cup run, and in fact, a club called Girls on the Run continues to meet and encourages girls to get fit and stay fit. Always looking ahead, Midway Elementary is dedicated to excellence. Teachers are continually working to incorporate the gradual release model and other 21st century strategies in their classrooms. They're also participating in staff development in the six traits of writing and the leader in meat, as well as preparing for the implementation of the common core state standards, all while embracing the expanded role technology has played in helping them meet the diverse needs of their students. Through collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and communication, the Midway Elementary School Team is committed to leading, learning, and living.
I would be remiss if I forget to share with you because one of the things that was a little lit for us when we looked at the video is the fact that our S.A.C. raised funds over a three-year period of time to install a special needs playground. And on that playground, there's a swing set that has special swing design, wheelchair chairs, and are more fragile to support. And then with the help of Boy Scouts, they took our indoor habitat and made it new to the past couple weeks and transformed the surrounding areas around the ornastic, around that special needs playground. The area there in our atrium that used to house the indoor habitat will now become the Wi-Fi cafe. We're hoping to extend the vision of the learning commons so that our learning areas can become larger. The collaboration that we have with iPads and our R.A.S. lab, it has had a tremendous response of interest with our teachers and students. And it is to say, the students are telling the teachers how to operate the iPad. So it's been a unique but really invigorating process. Now, parents move by program to put these tables and all in the foyer, where they have a Wi-Fi cafe. We haven't achieved that yet. So it is under construction, but the vision we got is on, we have to align with the district for bringing forward every person for it. But it's been a, it's an ongoing journey. It's going to continue to develop the vision. We're very excited, very honored that you give us the support that you do, as impossible without you. And we look forward to entertaining you next week as well. So, all right, good questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing. I get a lot of comments, a lot of negative comments, and only people don't give positive comments. I get a lot of positive comments about the school, a lot. I rarely get a negative. And to me, it means a lot that someone will go out of their way to make that positive comment. They don't have to. They usually just stay quiet. So you're to be commended. It's happened for many, many years. It's been a culture of high expectations there, and you need those expectations. And I think the parents truly seek the effort and see what's happening there, and they want to support a successful product. I think that's what the school is. I just wanted to say that I do get comments on other schools, and not all positive. Ninety-nine percent, I would say, people say, "Yeah, we're not from Midway, my grandchildren go there, our great grandchildren." Whatever. It's all positive. And like I said, they'll seek me out and tell me about it.
Well, thank you, sir. On that note, I will share with you that we have tremendous support, and we are blessed with that. The parents, the blood god that was mentioned, you know, that was our first, and I've never done that before. Red Cross started with a minimum total of 32 units to be donated. And then when they saw the response, they raised 45. We had 51 donors. So, you know, not only do they financially support, they're literally giving the money. But also, I have to commend our parents. They had noticed with Russia's drive for books that no, then our sister school was participating in that. And they said, "You know, looking at the new school opening, let's really beat up the participation and let's support that." So it's not always just about us, it's about our individuals. So I do appreciate your positive remarks, because you're on top, and you can don't share, they sit back and just assume someone else will appreciate it. So thank you, sir.
I'll also say, I'll give you a positive remark too. I have two kids there, and it has been blessing to be there. They really have prospered since they've been there with French immersion. Very thankful for it. So I'm giving you another positive reminder. It's been a great school.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I know you've got a new team, and this year you split. And so you've had a lot of new things to share. Y'all have just come right along, so congratulations on that. This weekend, we're glad you moved over. Should we finally solve life and cross the dam?
I crossed two rivers.
You did cross two, so we're glad you crossed one over. Anybody else? And we will see y'all next week. We'll definitely be there for Bill's mom, so thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Tally, and she's going to give us our Advanced Ed recap report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. The week before spring break is a very busy week for Lexington School District One. We hosted an eight-member on-site quality assurance review team from April the 1st, who may stay April 4th as part of the district's five-year cycle accreditation process. Our team members were from all over the country. There were school leaders, eight school leaders who pay off from Oklahoma, South Carolina, North Carolina, Missouri, and New Mexico. So they literally were from all over the nation. While the team was here, they reviewed the districts, they had reviewed before they arrived the district's self-assessment document, our profile data, our student achievement results, our schools' improvement plans, and other documents. While they were here, they visited the district office, they observed classrooms and student activities in eight of the district's 27 schools, and they interviewed 323 stakeholders, including board members, administrators, teachers, parents, community members, business partners, and yes, even students. Out of the four possible ratings of not evident, evident, operational, and highly functional, the team, I'm pleased to say, rated Lexington County School District One highly functional in six of the seven areas evaluated against Advanced in seven standards of vision and purpose, governance and leadership, teaching and learning, documenting and using results, resource and support systems, stakeholder communications and relationships, and commitment to continuous improvement. Dr. George Griffin, who is the lead evaluator of the review team, stated that the team was making a recommendation to the national level that Lexington County School District One received the highest level of accreditation. The team went on to commend our district for our district's superintendent and board vision and leadership and their support of innovative programs. They commended the district on its vision that's embraced by all the stakeholders which informs and supports programs and initiatives that prepare graduates to be leaders who are self-directed, creative, collaborative, caring, and multi-informed. They commended the community's legacy of support for the school system, our community's commitment, and their dedication to excellence and producing graduates prepared to be 21st century leaders in the world's society. They commended the district on addressing significant student enrollment growth through aggressive building programs that design schools to serve 21st century learning. They commended the professional learning community's focus on current research studies and best practices, embracing of collaborative planning and provision of focus to student-centered professional learning, and the district's forward-thinking and strategic long-range planning, which enables the district to develop and sustain quality programs in a time of diminishing physical resources and, as you well know, tight budget constraints. This is a process that school districts go through every five years, and in a couple of weeks, superintendent will receive a written confirmation of commendations and recommendations. To say the least, we, as a school system, are extremely proud of our department's deeds, our superintendent, our teachers, our administrators, certainly our students, our parents, and are very fond of you for the support that we receive daily. And that's what enables us to make Lexington One a highly functional, highly functional school system. So that's a report that we should certainly all be very proud of.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. We are so proud of that. The board, we were fortunate enough to be here when they gave the oral presentation, and I mean, it was just so heartwarming, and we know so much work went into that. For those of you who are not familiar, this is a big deal. And as far as we can tell, we think we've got the highest score they've ever given. Is that correct?
It's very rare, Madam Chair, for a team to commend a school district like ours and for us to have achieved six out of seven standards at highly functional, but it's a record. It was just a great day.
You know, in thinking in terms of this, and I was here to hear the report, to hear outside independent people educating, people who know what they're talking about, give us this kind of rating, and then to pick up the paper and read where certain aspects of this community, and I'm talking about certain parties and politicians that want politicize this process and they want to make something's not. It just really, I'll use a mild tone, it irritates. People need to understand, this is not political, this is what drives this economy. There's an election coming up. I get so upset when I read about the Alabama State Tea Party saying, "We've got a general, we're going to cut it back." Well, by God, we're doing the right thing. We're educating children, as you said, global citizens, not for Lexington County, global. And I get so upset when I hear these people who only go back to the three Rs. That's not the world we live in today, and to think it is is putting the end to sand and thinking backwards. And that's not the kind of school board people we need, and that's not the kind of district I want for my grandchildren, much less my children. I think we need to get out and start talking to a few people because folks is headed. And if we sit back, we're going to lose the momentum we have in this district, I promise. It's happened in other parts of this state and this country. We've got independent people who have stepped up to the plate and said, "You are the microcosm of what we want, what needs to be in education system." And it's not us telling ourselves that. It's somebody from New Mexico that knows us. So we're doing the right thing, we're committed to that right thing, and we need to continue that. The only way to continue that is to be very, very selfish about who sits on this board and the reasons they sit on this board. Voters will decide that. If we let the Tea Party people walk in, guess what? Let's move down a damn vote, because that's what you'll get. So I just want to get off my sunglasses, but it just irritates me to no end when I read the state newspaper this morning and I see what's happening, and I see what happens to other boards not so far away, Janet, I've seen it. So my point is, you need to start talking to people, remember it's not far away. It's not far away, I promise. I'll show that.
Anyone else? Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tally. And if you'll tell the principals and all the teachers and staff, you know, just how appreciative we are of them, we really look forward to getting a written report, and we hope we get some media coverage about that because it's just so outstanding. Anyway, let's keep moving. Let's go to the second reading of the calendar. We're on 10.2. This is the 2013-2014 calendar, and again, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I do bring for second reading to you the recommendation from the district county made for 2013-2014 academic school calendar, and this time, we need for action.
Board, this is an action item. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2013-2014 school calendar as presented?
Go ahead.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or question regarding this calendar? I think it's a really good calendar. You're committed with a nice job on it. Let's take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and addition unanimous. We now have a calendar, 2013-2014. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Butler for a fiscal services update. Board, this is only presented as information.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Woodward. Last month, they gave an update on the state proposed funding approved by the House. It had a base student cost of $2,000 per student, which is way below the $2,790 for a corporate limited control board should be funded. You know, the House says that they are increasing so funding by $152 million. That's only EFA. It includes overall money coming from the state. It's only $33 million statewide. If you go to the South Carolina Department of Education's website, you see that's an additional $2.4 million for Lexington One. That will not even cover the mandated increases as outlined in the House version, not even mention the other inflationary required increases that we have. Last week, the Senate Finance Committee received a briefing from Frank Rainwater. He is the chief economist of the state board of economic advisors. Currently, there is a $225 million surplus in general fund revenue collection for the current fiscal year, which is June 30th, 2012. $535.2 million in new recurring revenue for this year 2012-2013, and $175.8 million in net revenue growth for this year 2014. In EIA, there is a $17.7 million surplus in current fiscal year, $42.25 million in new reoccurring revenue for this year 2012-13, and a $19.1 million estimated revenue growth for this year 2014. Remember, the House is on proposing increasing public school funding by $33 million statewide for this year 2012-13. The Senate Finance Committee is continuing to work this week, and the full Senate Finance Budget Debate will start next week. The Senate full debate will start May 15th, and the last day of the legislative session is scheduled for June 7th. So hopefully, the Senate will be able to allocate more funds to the public schools than what the House has globally. After several discussions with the county, our local tax bill assessments are up by 3.6%. And that generated about $2 million additional funding for us this upcoming year. Due to the Senate Finance Budget Debate not finishing with their deliberations until sometime in our open day, we feel it would be better to delay the first reading of the budget until May 22nd. We feel that we have a better idea of what funding will come from the state at that time. It just needs to make sense to wait until we have more accurate information available. So that means first reading of the budget will be May 22nd, the second reading will be June 5th, and the third reading will still be June 26th. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, I just think one thing's really important for us to remember, that our current funding of the state is at the 1999 school year level, and you need to remember that we're in 2012. So we are way behind where we should be in educational funding, and I just, I'm very concerned that people don't realize that and lose that point. Any increase that we are seeing would not move us up to the 2012 model at all. So we need to keep that in mind.
And actually, even if they go to the 2012, it all brings to the year 2001 funding.
So it would still be a decade, over a decade.
This could be a century, though.
Well, that's true. That's a positive and very serious.
I do want to say, I resent the use of the term "increase." It is not an increase. Before the economic downturn, we were about $2,400.
I think last time, it was about $2,520.
Yeah, about $2,520. This is a replacement of lost funding. It is not an increase.
Oh, absolutely.
It will not be an increase until we go beyond the $2,520. Wrong term to use. It's a replacement of lost funding.
Yeah, if we were funded at the $25... Yeah, if we were funded at the $27, $27, $28 level, we should be funding, that would be just on $20 million each year for our district.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Butler? And Mr. Schumpert?
Well, another issue we have is, we're supposed to give places in the form of 2% of all, say, 2% educational, which can give to our teachers and professors. But at this time, I believe we've got about a full of maybe one and a half percent increase, net increase from the state, in fact, we're also taking away versus what we're giving.
And, gentlemen, that's fine, that's good.
Low funding.
That's not for the gloves, yeah.
All right, well, the issue here is, not only, as you had mentioned, only we have place and we're still around employees, but we're also going to have the increase of health insurance, workers' car, all these other issues constantly available. And one place we have to get there to get these additional revenues, is on the back of businesses in this district. No longer, no longer have to pay bill, pay taxes, or, 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 rent. One place this won't be revenue is off business. Cause of that, businesses in each area of this district are limited in how much more they will have. Any insurance, any businesses, one place similar to what we can do, no longer, we put all these extra costs on the back of businesses in this district.
This is plausible, and they have certainly made attempts to try to do reform tax reform, but it's just not giving, it's just not giving, and it is getting worse.
Anyone else? Okay, we will now move on to 10.4, which is a legislative update. Board, this is presented as information only, and this is from your board.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Woodward, I guess, this must be a Midway Elementary night, because our governmental relations committee joined Midway Elementary School's School Improvement Council, had an education funding roundtable discussion that School Improvement Council set up and ran on Monday, March 26th. It was held in the Midway Elementary Cafeteria. It was an important discussion in light of the fact that public schools have seen funding cuts of more than $700 million over the last few years. And Representatives Kenny Dingham, Rick Quinn, and Senator Jay Nance attended and chaired a panel and answered questions from the group. They participated in the roundtable discussion, and they talked about education funding only. The Midway Elementary School Improvement Council on the legislature did a great job. It was extremely organized and informative. Now, you remember, as Mr. Butler said, this is the second year of two-year general assembly session. The legislature begins its regular session each year on the second Tuesday in January, and they must adjourn no later than the first Thursday of June, which would be June 7th, as you said, unless an extension decree to back to both bodies. Well, since this is the second year of two-year legislature session, any deals that do not already pass through the House and Senate and then cross over to the other body for consideration on their bylaw may first, will in all likelihood not become law this year. Joint Resolution H. 4905 was ratified April 13th, the Senate, and signed by the governor April 14th. It delays requirements for districts to issue teacher contracts, and I'm sure Ms. Walker will have more information about this for you during her update. So we're going to start with the Senate this time, there's a little bit of a reverse age, we start with the House, we're going to start with the Senate. You heard Mr. Butler say that the Senate Finance Committee begin budget debate next week on those budgets, and we expect the full Senate to debate the budget, so we can make decisions. The Senate Education, Kennedy 312 Subcommittee, on April 11th, dealt with a number of bills in that school districts. It carried over debate on Senate Bill 1314, and that bill deals with the beginning of the district's academic year. It would allow school boards by majority vote to advance the opening day of school for any school year by no more than one week, or one week. So instead of the third Monday in August, you could start the second Monday in August. By law, right now, you know, we can't change it over to the third Monday in August. It would also give the State Board of Education the ability to delay the school opening day requirement. The Subcommittee carried over debate on House Bill 3035, and that bill would allow districts to establish their academic countries based on the current statute to return of 180 days of instruction, or an equivalent number of instructional hours, so equivalent of 180 days. The Subcommittee reported out favorably on House Bill 3236, which is a bill that amends the compulsory education requirement. It actually adds the South Carolina Association of Christian Schools and similar organizations of parochial denominations or church-related schools, achieve the requirements for attendance of compulsory education programs. The Subcommittee also reported out favorably Senate Bill 1267, that's the proposed school district choice and open enrollment program bill. This bill establishes school choice and open enrollment within a public school system as a basis to criteria for sending or receiving school districts. It's been amended to allow both school boards, rather than the State Board of Education, to determine that the school, and it would eliminate the opposite school choice of the State Department of Education. We'll vote the full Senate Education Committee tomorrow. The House of Representatives has returned from a two-week-long furlough, and there, the House Ways and Means Committee should debate tomorrow, House Bill 4993, which, if you remember, that's the bill concerning manufacturing property tax, business personal property tax deduction. And it's projected to negatively impact school districts by $540 million annually, when it's fully implemented in 2017. The House Ways and Means Committee should also debate House Bill 4998, a bill which deals with commercial property tax deduction. And as you remember, this bill's projected to negatively impact school districts by $508.9 million when fully implemented in 2001. The House Ways and Means Property Tax Subcommittee next day to begin debate school bus privatization and decentralization with some amendments. Amendments strike in regional language and insert some new language, and among that language is that the bill stipulates that districts will not be required to purchase school buses currently in use from the state, and instead, the state will give us those school buses and shop facilities, and, and the age of buses that you use.
I lose billions of dollars on that bus, we'll take it.
But there's a catch, it says that the age of the bus that you can use goes from 15 years old to 12 years old. Finally, I encourage you all, and this has sort of been mentioned before by a person, all registered voters, and not already registered voters, the deadline to register to vote or to vote in the June 5th primary is May 10th. So that's, come in quickly. It's really important that people are registered, and that they educate themselves as to what their candidate stands for, and that they vote. Okay, so we're ready to vote.
Are there any questions?
No, suppressing. Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
And we're going to have to buy those buses.
Okay, any questions or comments?
The issue with buses, and I believe the last time we were here, we had 167 buses in this district.
Yeah, 15 years old.
And of the buses, there are 120 now that would not meet qualification, would not be able to be used when you have to go out and purchase.
That was if they were 15 years old. I haven't run the numbers in the evidence, and now they're already 12 years old, but that would increase the number of them that would be allowed.
What was the monetary number of that?
Ask your junior, ask the question.
Yeah, it's supposed to be about $10 million or a little better overall. And probably that's the type of question I'd just, it'd probably at least $10 million. You got a cookie jar somewhere you don't know about?
I don't have one.
Thank you, Mr. Schumpert. Any other questions or comments, board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to 10.5, which is a report from Human Resources. Board, this is presented as information only, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Walker.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Woodward, as Mary Bethfield said, the General Assembly recently passed a joint resolution, it's called R. 165, H. 4905. And what that does, it gave us flexibility, which really helped us because of the timing of spring break around the issuance of contracts. But for your information, we are issuing them this Friday, April 20th, and in Bonn, teachers have 10 days after the issuance of a notification, so we will be asking them back by April 30th. Now, one thing that you may have received questions about, middle school teachers involved in rezoning and all transfers, you know, the Royal High George Initiative, this Friday, along with their contract, they will receive their tentative assignments, so they will know what school. There are a few areas that we cannot make those determinations yet, and they may have to be determined, but I'd say about 90%. So just to inform you that that information is going out.
That would be like the new assignments memo?
Yes, they're going to know their location. The memo going out to the employees states that more detailed information about grade level and area assignments will come a little bit later, but at least they'll know what campus.
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Walker. Any questions or comments from Ms. Walker? Hearing none, we'll move to 10.6, which is an operations report from Mr. Butler. And aboard the board, again, this is presented as information only.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Woodward. Tonight, I bring you some pictures of construction projects that are ongoing. These are projects funded through the 2008 bond referendum, voted on by the public. We'll start tonight with Riverwood High School, located on Ploton Road. You see, the high school, just in a month's time, has really changed significantly. We have a lot more roof structure in place, and the facade's really taking shape around the front area there. We've done a lot of grading and work on the front parking lot areas, just to orient you to main entry is here, you have your office and guidance areas, administration guides on this area here, your learning commons is in this back area with some art classrooms. On the right-hand side, we have our fine arts and athletics and cafeteria spaces, and on the left-hand side, we have classroom rooms, which we'll see a closer look at here in a minute. This is a rear view of the building as well. The center area here will be an outdoor learning space, courtyard area, student activity room. Ploton Road actually runs kind of catty-cornered this year, and you can see there, there's a lot of trees protecting the view of the building, and so from Ploton Road, you really don't get a direct advantage of the school. That's intentional. The cones that you see out on Ploton Road, all that roadwork out there, means it's been getting that final paving done on Ploton Road in June 8th. We're waiting on some work in DOT, to be completed before we do that final pavers, but that'll really take shape over the next month or so. This is the lower end of the site, where the athletic fields are starting to take shape. You see on the right-hand side, there are a track, there's actually curving, there's been the downed track, we have a baseball field here, softball here, there'll be a practice field up here, and our main competition, football, stadium here, this parking area is taking shape, and this actually is a student parking area here, and there'll be some tennis courts down here. What you'll notice is a lot of green space still left on the site, a large amount of trees were left on the site intentionally, and there are some wetlands that, you know, all the weapons are protected as well on the site. This is near the front of the building, looks most like some of the renderings we saw early on. Here's a shot of the interior, and you're looking out. This is actually standing in the secure foyer that we have in our new designs. This is a view, kind of looking down in the center commons of the, of the building, down on the end, on the lower end there, you have the gymnasium there on, it's kind of hard to see that, this is the main corridor, the hallway there, of the building. This is a view of one of the classroom rooms, the first floor of the classroom rooms. And this is another classroom room, you can see some of the roof structure, starting to take shape there on the second floor. This is a view, looking down into the cafeteria space. This is actually inside the cafeteria, and here on the left-hand side is the serving lines, and then on the right side, just kind of cut off here, there's a small stage area. You notice a lot of natural light, that's very intentional part of our certification. This is a view of the gymnasium area, and again, you see some natural light coming into that, that space. I have a shot of that gymnasium area, actually looking out towards the center hallway there. This is a view of the Portland Arts Theater, it's designed, just like the flowback, it's a lesson in high school. It looks a lot smaller right now than when all the walls get up and the seats get renovated after the same size. Moving on to Medical and Middle School, this is our middle school that'll be opening up, actually across the road there, in Jenny Lane, getting opened in August. Pleased to tell you tonight that we had an inspection there this morning, also school facilities, that inspects our school buildings as they're constructed, and they never had inspection there this morning, and we've got a favorable inspection report, so progress there is moving forward as we would expect. Just to orient you on the site, this is I-20, and this is Jenny Lane, of course, the building is here, main student drop-off will be occurring in this area here, buses and service entry vehicles will be coming out this side here. And of course, the elementary school, Medical and Elementary is adjacent to the property here. This is a view of the front of the school building, campus there, taking shape. Just a side view of the building, I think last month, when we showed this picture, there was no windows in place, and you see a lot of that work is taking shape, it's a lot different than it did a month ago. This is the front entry, the main office area, a lot of storage going on there right now, but it's, it's starting to take shape. This is one of the collaborative spaces in the middle school, the wings are set up in all those houses, and this is an area where students can still out of the classroom spaces and do group work projects and, and really collaborate. And then, this is another collaborative space, one of the other houses, it's broken on the first floor. This is a view of the, from the second floor, looking down into the gymnasium, and there's a lot of materials stored there for, for in this one end across the building. This is a view of the learning commons on the second floor, a lot of, again, natural light in the space. This is a view of the little theater, this is a, little theater is designed very similar in size to our theaters at our other middle schools that we have in the district. And then this is a view of our cafeteria space, again, the second floor, as you can see, the workers are restoring the terrazzo, these lawyers here in the floor, the design and the terrazzo, they'll come back in for that over the next few weeks and run that material, debate floor. And this is a picture that I had late at night, I'll be glad to answer any questions, board.
Do you have any questions or comments, board? I have Dr. Pitts, and then mine, I'm playing on the spot, but I think he went to an high school special or something, or medical in the middle?
Yes.
And you want to share?
Yeah, the guy, the speakers they were talking about, they meant to, you know, a few of those events around the state, and they said they had never seen that much turnout come to a event like that. It was, I pulled into the parking lot, and they went to the spot, and it was a great event, I think the citizens and the parents there, I think they're very enthused about what's coming, and I am too, because my daughter is about to start next year, so.
Our middle schools are so cool, we definitely need some belief, so I just thought that was so positive, and they told me how crowded it was and how excited we were to be. Great, thank you, everybody. Okay, that is it for 10.0, now I'll turn to 11.0. Did anybody have any questions or comments about any of that from you? Hearing none, we'll go to new business. Board members, this is an action item, it is regarding the adoption of a textbook, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Woodward. Tonight, I bring to you a recommendation from the District Construction Materials Review Committee for 2012-2013 Integrated English Language Arts, K. 5. The committee recommends adopting Hope Midland-Hofford South Carolina Journeys, grades five, K. 5. It's important that you know that this series is aligned to the current South Carolina standards, as well as the Common Core State standards. All the materials in the series are available online free of charge as part of the adoption. There is no cost involved in the full implementation, including continuing professional learning throughout life of adoption. I do want to take a personal privilege and thank Lily Carman, who chaired the review. She was diligent to ensure that the review was very thorough. I can assure you that they left no stone unturned in reviewing the materials, and we seek approval on this recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. Do I hear a motion to approve the English Language Arts Textbook Adoption as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the proposed textbook adoption for Integrated English Language Arts grades K. 5, South Carolina Journeys, Hope Midland-Hofford, as presented for the school year 2012-2013.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, are there any questions or comments regarding this textbook? I do think it's exciting that we're gonna be able to load that onto the iPads. We're very excited about the technology that comes with adoption. I think anytime we can do that, it's just great. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries, it is unanimous. At this time, we might go to 11.2, but which board, again, is an action item, a student travel request, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I have seven student travel requests, I'll review each request, and there are a lot of more policy I see.
Okay, board, you have been presented with those before. Do I have a motion to approve the student travel request as presented by Dr. Tally?
Sure.
Do I have a second? Any questions or comments regarding the student travel request? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries, it is unanimous. Board, 12.0, or I just read your information only, I have item 13.1, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, please stand up. If y'all can just bring those sheets up here, we'll sign them.